All right, we'll get started with the work session for tonight. And the first item on the agenda is Discussion of the Right and the Right. Just led by... One moment please. Oh, okay. Paul, are you reading this discussion on the front?
Um, I'm Dan. How far did you start?
No, this part? Okay, thanks. Oh, thanks. I'm Denise Boyer. I'm at 9312 Atlantic Avenue. I'm here representing with some of the other owners, Alana, Kathy, and Lauren. All in Atlantic Avenue. We wanted to address some of the issues from the flooding that's been going on. And we resubmitted some PowerPoint with six problems that we've identified. And we're really here in the spirit of collaborating on finding some solutions, as we all know. And we can do this a couple of ways. I mean, we did a PowerPoint. We can have Lauren run through that and identify the problems briefly, go through them. Or we can just go to the bottom line, so the solutions, what the problems are. I know all of you have read it. I think there was one addition of problem five, the fifth problem of six that we identified. So it's really your preference. I know we have limited time, and there's others to speak. So we want to be respectful of that, and again, collaborative. It's really about getting to some solutions with things that the berm didn't address. The berm did a great job on some of the things that were supposed to, and it did. But since then, we've realized there are other issues that are flooding that we want to identify. So it's really up to you if you want Lauren to run, how much you want her to run through quickly, and then get the solutions.
Well, the council is pretty familiar with the back of that. It's really akin to, if you call the rest of me, you're comfortable with that. Mr. Gene Slera is here also, and he can run through, you know, he's also looked at that back. If you want to highlight something that's more relevant.
Yeah, we'd like Lauren to highlight it, and then some of the solutions we have identified, that we propose, and then Jean, we'd like to hear from you. And really, thanks for the discussion. This is really why we're here.
Can you put the plan?
The plan? Oh.
I have one up. I have a few of the things that you're speaking in.
You're talking about some of those kind of...
Someone's face. Yeah?
I'm looking. Yeah, I'm looking. I haven't... We're having a computer trouble. Well... Okay, so should I run through the whole PowerPoint? Or just, I can just go to problem five as an addition?
I'll highlight it. Jean's going to follow up with responses to the PowerPoint. So if you want, it'll be, you know, we can discuss it at that point. But I would go through what you feel strongly about, or what you want to, like, skim through. But I would work to work through.
All right, everyone has it? Major's numbers? I don't think they are. I know. Okay, so obviously, flood occurrence. The first, let's see, slide three, four, five. There's pictures of the flood. Slide five, I think, is interesting because it does show that while the water got kind of high on the berm, it did not top the berm. That would be coming from the right side. Um, one thing, so I just want to talk a little bit about problem one because it makes a little bit of confusion about that. Problem one, we would think that during this storm, waves were over-topping the jetty, the revetment that's east of the berm. We think maybe that jetty is too low. And if you turn to slide eight, I've got a picture of the plan there.
You're not numbered.
You're not numbered? Okay, so there's a picture of the plan right, it shows some of you because... Do you all see that, buddy?
No, we're not numbered.
You're not numbered? Okay. Which is a picture of the plan. There's some arrows that show the jetty that I'm talking about here. It's at the end of Atlantic Avenue, right near the Murphy's house. And we think during that weather event, waves were coming over that jetty. It seems kind of low. Some of the pictures following that, so slide nine, you can see, and it's a lot easier to see on a computer. How about... I'm sorry, no, I wasn't going to email this to you because your system doesn't accept the PowerPoint.
This is from your conference room, Paul.
Yeah. Yes, overall, thank you. Yours is too large, I think.
It's too large, right. So if someone could give me an email address that can accept this PowerPoint, I'd be happy to send it to you. When you look at these pictures on a computer screen, you can see the runnels and the rails and the channels that show pretty clearly that waves did come over this jetty. And poured water kind of on the other side, the outside of the berm. You can see debris, some debris is caught in the brush near the jetty, and it shows the kind of wave action. So I think that was one kind of main problem we solved. Problem two, everyone knows about, 261 is too low. They have a plan to fix that. Moving on. Problem three, you know, in, looking at the stormwater catch basins, it seemed that a lot of them are clogged. That, there's some pictures here that show that. I don't know what your stormwater maintenance program is. I think you are subjected to the MS4 Phase II permit now, and I think you probably are, you know, need to have some kind of, I don't know if you're doing street sweeping if you're vacuuming out the storm drains. But it seems to me when you look at some of these pictures, some of these storm drains are clogged. And this is just one I can see. Uh, problem four is the stormwater pump station. Paul, you and I have talked about this a little bit, that perhaps, maybe this, you know, that the pump station is, there's some design flaws that hamper its effectiveness. Primarily, the outflow that goes into the bays too low. I think it's sitting on the bottom, gets clogged with soap, and the pump's not powerful enough. From what I understand, you guys have applied for a grant to kind of upgrade that?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so that's kind of in process. I'm sure that will help. Problem five is, we added this yesterday. Um, so there's two stormwater catchment basins and one inspection cover on the outside of the berm. And when you walk out there and look at these, like, the town put some hay bales around the catchment basins just recently. When you walk around and look at these, and you, so look at some of these pictures, it seems that the water, rather than going into the catchment basin, is going out of the catchment basin. So it's a reverse flow when water gets hot. But maybe that's because the pump, and I haven't seen your schematic showing how all your pipes and sewer system works. But maybe it's because the pump's not strong enough to drain the sewer system. I don't know. But there are pictures here that show, several pictures that show, that the water is running out of the catchment basin and out of the inspection cover.
Excuse me, you want pictures of behind or ahead of problem five?
Back of problem five. Yeah, you're on.
There, there.
Yeah, you're on.
I'm going to put back what you're talking about.
Well, I mean, the pictures, I don't have, I wasn't there when it was backfiring. Perhaps happened in the middle of the night, I don't know. Yeah, but the pictures, I think, if you walk, I saw you out there earlier, actually. When you're looking at it, you can see how the water, when you're looking at the soil and the erosion, kind of, the structure of it, how it's coming out of the catchment basin, not going into it. Uh, problem six is Atlantic Avenue is sloped towards the houses rather than away from the houses. And then problem seven, and this is the jetty within the confines of the berm. It seems to me, and this would be one of the last pictures, that that jetty is too, is, I know you raised it once because it was too low. I think it's still too low. And again, the picture here shows kind of scour and erosion of your berm. So over time, that's going to actually compromise the berm itself, which is good. So those are the problems. We have kind of brainstormed and come up with, you know, some proposed solutions. But, you know, I'm an environmental lawyer. I work at EPA, used to run the Stormwater Management Program. But, you know, I'm not a hydrologist. I'm not an engineer. So I'm sure all of you, Paul, you will have some better ideas, maybe some other solutions. This is just kind of what we came up with. So let's run through that real quick and then see what you guys have to say. So problem one, the low jetty, and that's the one near the Murphy's house. Perhaps that can be raised.
Is that the split jetty? For air.
Yeah, yes, right there. Thank you.
Okay, that's one split.
You have to probably just open the permit, but... See, I mean, the pictures that I have and the evidence that I have, it seems that during high weather events, hard wind events, and by the way, when the storm happened, I think the wind was maybe 12 to 15 knots. But the tide was very high, we all knew that. The water was coming over that jetty. Now, I know that there's a Hoffman Plan, the North Beach Plan, I know there was a Core Plan. I can't scroll in close enough to see, in the Core Plan, what was the height of that jetty in the Core Plan versus the plan that we all went with? I don't know. Was it higher? Was it the same? I don't know. But it seems to me it's too low.
Or did it have an elevation?
Did it have an elevation? What was your elevation?
4.1.
4.1?
When you're talking about the jetty, you're talking about the, not the Atlantic side. No, I know, but where exactly? Like, behind Murphy's house?
Yeah, just right there. So what happens? Can I get up there?
Yeah.
I mean, I've seen it. I just want to make sure we're talking in the same area.
So what happens is the water comes over this jetty right here, and it goes in between the Murphy's house, it actually goes on both sides of the Murphy's house, comes over here, goes along Atlantic Avenue, but it goes on this side, and ends up going on this side of the berm, the outside. And then, of course, we all know that because 261 is low, it comes around from this side as well. 261 we were talking about. Problem three, the clogged stormwater catchment basins, you know, like, maybe look at your, you know, maintenance program, how often do you clean those out? Do you vacuum them out? You know, do you sweep the streets? I see a guy out there sweeping streets, but I don't know how frequent that is. Just a common stormwater BMP, or best management practice. In and out to a pump station, Paul, you speak to that. You know, perhaps some of these problems, problem four and five can be addressed if that maybe is somehow the problems with the pump station are solved. Atlantic Avenue is sloped towards the homes. I mean, that, to me, obviously, you would have to regrade Atlantic Avenue, but then it would slope towards the bay. I'm not sure what the state would say. I don't know. And then, problem seven, which is a low jetty, which is causing potential compromises of the berm, raise it up a little bit. You've already done it once. Have to do it a little higher. So those are our proposed solutions. I know we don't have a lot of time. Of course, we're willing to meet with you guys at any time and help out, provide any, you know, information or whatever we can. But we would like to hear from you if you have any other types of solutions, basically what your timing is, to kind of move forward and try to figure out what we can do.
Hi. Again, I apologize. It's a problem, it's Atlantic Avenue, that little, we've looked at it many times, the drainage box that somebody put in many, many years ago. It's right on the road.
Yeah, that little skinny grate?
Yeah. I mean, I mean, you have, that thing's always, I mean, obviously, that thing isn't, I don't think is...
What is that? Does that go into the stormwater or sewer?
Yeah, it goes into the stormwater.
It goes into the stormwater, so it's supposed to drain the road?
Yeah.
That was, that was put in, that was mandated by the state. We're not draining towards the bay. They had to drain back toward the curve, and then defeat it of all storm.
Which is kind of silly to think about it, because then it goes into the bay. It's not draining.
That was $600,000 fixed.
I work at Enforce, we're not permitting, so I can write the permit in. People write the permit.
But I think that's something, if you know, we've looked at it before, just, I think, when you say timeframe, I think this is a concern for everybody.
Yeah.
It's a conversation that we've got to continue. I think the berm did its job. We need to raise 261. And then look at these other items. But that ain't there. Because it sounds like we can't slope it towards the bay. I think addressing that, whatever that thing is.
And there's that thing, but there's also like the larger, the stormwater catchment basins. There's one right in front of my house, I live at 9230. And it's full. It's like halfway full of debris and all kinds of stuff. So that's mine, you know, I call it mine, I'm not yours. But I don't know what the other ones look like, you know? And if you don't have a regular, you know, maintenance program for your stormwater drains, they're going to fill up. I mean, you know, maybe it'll help. I think it should help.
Can't hurt.
Can't hurt.
I know Jean's going to address some of these issues. So I have a couple other questions, but one, just maybe, Jean, while you answer yours, speaking with the rocks that go behind it, were placed on that jetty up the side that you were talking about, I've noticed that they don't go all the way to the other side of the shore. There's sort of rocks that come out like this, and then they stop. You guys know what I'm talking about, that there's just dirt there. So when Jean, when you speak, maybe you can address that as well, because one of the concerns I have is it seems like it's eroding behind there as well.
Yeah, it is. It's actually, I think, you're talking about this little, that was, that's in the slide. So this, the rocks you're talking about, this little jetty, right? And it's too low.
Well, and they end, they don't go all the way...
They don't go all the way over here, right?
Right, exactly.
Right. And they're also low. So waves come through here, and they over-top this jetty, and then they're eating away at the berm.
Exactly.
I mean, that, to me, like, kind of a lot of money on the berm. Like, it seems like a pretty simple fix, at least protect the berm.
Well, I wasn't sure why the rocks didn't go all...
Probably on living shoreline.
Jean can address that.
I'm finished, Jean. Unless you guys have any other questions?
Number one and number seven.
All right. I'll give that up for me.
Problem one and seven?
The solution's in the back.
Yep. Hold on. Uh, yeah, there's two different jetties. So one jetty is the one on the other side of the Murphy's house?
This is the containment structure that you were speaking about, that you're calling a jetty?
No.
And then this is a revetment along here.
Yes, I'm talking about the revetment. So that's problem one.
And this is problem last, I guess.
And in that little codebook, right? This problem's a, yes.
Okay. You done? David Johnson, good to see you again. My name is Jean Slera. I'm the Vice President of Environmental Concern. We constructed the jetty. We modified the original design. Excuse me, we constructed the floodway. We modified the original design and got it permitted. And we worked with the mayor and the council and the State Highway Administration to set an elevation that would protect the area through the tidal pond up to an elevation of plus 4.1. Now, we have, we have to define some terms, if we could, to make it easier for all of us. This is a revetment that we added to in front of Murphy's house that joins Jersey barriers in the front of Atlantic, which is also a revetment. We improved the stone containment structure. We replaced the stone containment structure in the, I'll call it the Murphy Pond for lack of familiarity. And then we extended that over in front of the wetland as a containment structure. When it tops, it is designed, the inlet's right here, it is designed to over-top that at about 3.0 and go into the berm. I walked the berm this afternoon and saw no structural damage. There is planting, plants that need to be replaced. And while we're doing that, we'll get a closer look at it. But this is designed as a containment structure, not as a revetment. It is simply to hold the sand in this area of plantings. So I'm addressing this out of order.
Why, please, stop it. Why wouldn't it be a revetment? Why, why not have the rocks go all the way? Just so you can understand.
Because it's a vegetated pond, a vegetated stormwater management. You're going to have canyon all the way over to the inlet?
Just all the way, yeah, all the way around. It was just...
Excellent. It is a vegetated berm. And the elevation of the berm from here, well, from just off the road through here and out is 4.1. The elevation of the revetment is 4.1. The elevation of the containment structure is less than that. I said it's 3 something. I don't have that in front of me. But it is set up so that it can be over-top, but it will contain the sand in the pond. We don't want it to move much.
Heather, just on this point, do you mind if I ask a question? That one will be mine.
Go ahead.
Okay. So I think there's a following on your question here. So when the water comes in here, it goes over this, what is it? What are those rocks? What is top of the term?
Containment structure?
These rocks underneath the water are called containment structure.
Yes.
The water, the wave action is over these rocks, which seem to be over there, and they are eating away at the berm right here. So what do you think about that?
We'll have to disagree on that. I walked that berm. This is in front of Murphy's and in front of the Knights' House, right? I just walked that.
Okay. All right, well, there's a picture here that shows that that is actually coming, but...
Okay, well, would you...
We can walk it down.
Done. There are those definitions. Let me back up a bit, and if you still have the diagram or any of the numbers in front of you.
Do you want the one with the tides or the other one?
The one with the tides. Thank you. This information is historic tides, verified tides for Tuesday the 6th, Wednesday the 7th, and Thursday the 8th. Can we, did I do that?
Yeah.
Okay, there we go. Thank you. I overlaid a tide line of 2.7, which is the elevation of the, the roads 261, 264. That elevation is 2.7, and it's really quite an event when you consider that the tide was over the road and therefore in the backyards. It flooded over the road, flowed down behind 261, is that the number that I have there? Down in front of Gwen's house and around. And it, our experience is it flooded the area behind the berm in about a half an hour. Now, that initial tide went down, the low tide after that was 2.0, which is about 6 tenths to 8 tenths higher than the normal high tide. So the water, the ebb tide didn't clear the bay. The next tide we had was 3.1, 3.2, which is 6 tenths above. And then, of course, we get down into this area, Wednesday, 3.7. That entire time period, 24 hours, we had a tide that was at 3.9. And it flooded the entire area. I think in the document that indicated it's some yards or two feet. That doesn't surprise me, because the elevation of a lot of those yards is about 1.8 to 2.2. So the 3.9 tide, it's clear that the elevation in those yards would have approached two feet. The tide didn't go out, the next tide system was still above the road, just barely. One after that, barely below the road. But, and then the one after that was coming up to the elevation of the road. In the meantime, they were clearing. Now, how does that water drain out? We established, had two things. One was tidal flooding that we wanted to manage and contain to an elevation of, a design elevation of plus 4.1. That worked. The tide that got in behind the houses came in for the reasons that I just pointed out. The situation that, and I'll come back again to the containment structure, but the over-topping of the revetment at Murphy's was not a tide over-topping it, it was wave action against that revetment and splashing over. To be sure, there was a lot of water coming over there. That drained along the rest of the tide when the tides went out. The, it worked as it should. There's additional information that you have on the bottom of that sheet that addresses the tide and the wind elevation. And the winds, we disagree a bit on that. The wind, in March 6th, recorded winds right out of southeast, 10 to 16 knots. The tide at that time was 2.3 feet above normal. It was being pushed up in the bay and in the area. The winds then turned around, and on Wednesday, March 7th, about 7 o'clock, the winds were out of the northwest, 16 to 22 knots. In the time while that was turning around, we saw the southeast winds, and you see the tide, that's above normal, that tide that we're looking at, and that relates...
So where are you getting that weather data?
From what stations in Solomon's, Cambridge, Annapolis, and Bishop's.
All right. They didn't show any winds out of northeast? How?
It came around from, I, yes...
I thought it was northwest. You went northeast.
The winds were coming out, the winds that I plotted that I listed for you were out of the northwest. It came around, and it was north, then northeast, and then northeast, north, and then northwest. The original tide that did the damage or raised it, the original winds that raised it were the winds out of southeast for a day, full day ahead of it. I didn't, I only booked the ones that were significant. So the, there are two problems. One is, we haven't, we talked about it, when we talked about raising the elevation of the berm from the original plan, which I think was 3.1 or 3.5. We went to 4.1. And we took the information from NOAA, and we looked at what would work in a 50-year timeframe. And that was something that they were, 5.8 to 6.2, that wasn't reasonable. We went back to council, to engineering, to the army corps, and finally to the state, and settled on 4.1. We haven't had a tide to exceed that. And when I looked at 10 years prior, that's all the data I had. And we haven't had one since that time. The tide we had was 4.0. It did not top the berm. The issue will be years going forward, and in 10-year, 20-year timeframe, we'll see how we rise. What do we do with that situation? But time planning it for a reasonable storm event or a reasonable tide event, we, it serves as permission.
Jean, can I, Captain, can I ask, Jean, a question? I don't think anybody here is disputing the circumstances for these days, and that it's unusual and that the entire coast is dealing with issues. But I've been in my house seven months, and the flooding has happened three times. And not all of the coastal flooding issues. So I think, I think the problem is, it might too, there's still an issue, even if we don't have huge winds and...
There's, there's two issues. One is tide, the other is surface water from a rain event. And in fact, the fact of life is, at Atlantic Avenue, those houses on Atlantic Avenue are all this big. Water drains to the slowest point.
Okay. And now, the berm, which has addressed the issues that it was intended to uphold in, has created some other issues.
Were there still some other issues that are there?
That it was already addressed, or that has facilitated it. So now it's trapping water for some of the lower...
It's not trapping surface water, wrong. It's containing tide.
Yes, okay. That would be made in their statement. But it's still an issue, like, how do, listen, the only we really want is a solution. I mean, nobody, we, we all agree that it's going to get worse, so...
There's two things to, we have to look at. Did it function as it showed it?
The berm did.
The berm worked. But maybe it wasn't the right...
No, absolutely, Jean, the berm helped.
There's two problems. The first problem, tidal flooding, won't be solved until 261 is raised to an elevation of 4.1. That's happening in two years.
But that's, that's not going to solve the water that's coming over by the Murphy's house.
Revetment. Or the revetment, or the water, wherever you call it.
We're going to have wind-driven waves that will top that from time to time. That's not going to flood...
What if you were to raise it a little bit? Then it wouldn't top it, right?
Well, it's not going to take your life.
We've been on site off and on during the construction season for three years now. Spent a lot of time in front of your house and in front of Murphy's house in that river. Comment was made that it doesn't, that if we raise it a foot, I think the, I think the Jersey barriers, the blue barriers in front of Atlantic Avenue are 5.1 or 5.2 elevation. I don't want to say something wrong, I'm not sure if I'll matter. It might be written on my record. We shot it. When we're sitting there in a, in a wind event, we get drenched. When we're sitting there in a, in a wind event, we get drenched and the waves crash against that Jersey barrier and completely wetting the street. And completely wet the street, the access, we call it access area two, which is right next to your house, the vacant lot, which we were, there were kind enough allowance to go through there. It would completely wet that. That's just wind-driven waves.
Okay.
Now, it doesn't have the ability to drain easily on Atlantic Avenue because of that linear drainage. It remains, we'll prove that over time for sure. Another situation is when there is a tide above an elevation 2.6, that comes back on the road and comes down, it seeks a low point, which used to be the tidal pump. It would run right back into the tidal pump. It would flood, flood the whole area, but then when there was an extremely, when there was a low tide, not unlike what we had tonight, it would eventually drain out with the tide. Until we had that low tide, it was trapped in, in the swales in parallel of Gwen's house and another swell in the parallels, it's perpendicular to Ninth Street, comes up near where my show is. And those swales, here to us, were self-help and were made to drain it into the tide. The challenge that was placed in implementation of the design after this committee is the areas behind the, but they're now behind the berm. Are delineated what? Waited? The easy answer would be say, let's just ignore that ecological benefit. And Philip, wouldn't you have permit for that?
I don't know, you might have.
Are you talking about the...
I'm not, I'm not implying, and you know about it.
Are you talking about the area behind our backyard between the berm and our backyard? Is that the area you're talking about?
That is weather.
Okay. All right.
And what we, what we did was we got a permit on what easements, some of those easements were long time coming. And there was a lot of discussion about it.
Can I, I understand exactly what you're saying. It's coming behind the Murphy's house now. Before, it would eventually go back out because no berm blocking. Now we have a berm there, it's coming over, it can't go out, so it stays back or whatever happens.
Well, I can tell you what happens.
Yeah. Oh, no, we don't...
I can tell you.
I can also tell you Thursday morning was dry there.
Right.
So when I went to 4.0, Thursday morning when I went over there, all that water went out through the drain system. So it was all sensitive, not draining out.
If we looked at the, the solutions on the back, I think they're all viable solutions to look at. Absolutely. Now, if we could clean it out?
That's, yeah, that's...
I mean, that's, that's one. The pump with the grant.
Yeah.
And then that part on Atlantic Avenue, I think those are things that we can look at now, I think, as a council, you know?
And to, to answer the question, Jean, are you saying to raise that to your, is that a question about raising the revetment? You're saying that that wouldn't make a difference? Is that what I'm hearing?
I think you can always throw more money and raise it to whatever height you want, but the idea that wave action against that revetment is gonna keep wave, cascading wave keep water out of there is, is not valid. It's not valid.
I mean, can I just add to that? Because I mean, I do look right, I mean, I look at that storm, that Jersey barrier when, when waves are really high, I mean, they don't actually come over the Jersey barrier, they actually come under the Jersey barrier.
But they can't drain out because the slug...
I mean, they're not overtopping the Jersey barrier, which is what, would you say what?
Probably close to 6.
The tide, the tide hasn't hit 5.1, I'm aware. Hasn't even hit 4.1. But when, it's, it's not the tide. If you look at it as a backdrop, that's still water, is not overtopping.
The way you said the Jersey barrier, they don't go over the Jersey barrier, they go under it. Water goes under, it washes it.
So why? I can tell you, I get soaked in wet standing there. I've gotten soaked in wet with this splashing over the Jersey barrier. It's, it's just the way they go.
So no matter how much rain, it's not gonna...
No, there's always a, there's always an elevation where you will stay dry.
But if we were to prioritize and look at the things that will make the most difference now that we have control of, it seems like looking at, you know, the drainage, the maintenance piece, I mean, that's something we can easily look at.
The pump.
Yeah, the pump, we can get update on...
261's going on.
Where we, we know 261 is, is, so those are three things.
Yeah.
Right there that we can, and Jean, I think you said that once the grasses are planted, where those hay bales are, because I noticed that too, I just, I saw them covered with mud, I couldn't actually even see the metal, but your guys told me that once the grass is planted, that that would control the mud issue. So that would be addressed.
I looked at that this evening and there are hay bales around. There's some, there's some sediment involved in that, but the pipe is real clear. You can see the pipe is turning from that. There is sediment around that basin, flow to it that will address that as a simple maintenance issue while we're planting that.
And how much will it plant? Maybe mention that, like how much will, I know you've told me in the past that once you do planting, that will help with drainage and absorption of water as well, right?
Well, we're at the worst time of year. There's no vegetation, there's no evaporation to speak of. And still to drain within 24 hours from a 4.0 tide, 3.9 tide. When the biomass is planted, it'll be evapor, and in the growing season, there'll be evaporation and transpiration. Transpiration, you can take in, take in that water up in the plants. It will still be wet, it's a wet, but it won't be, you won't see water hugging the ground, it'll, it'll be in the wet.
It'll go away.
And that's the design. The elevation of those drains were set to protect property, not to drain the area completely. They were based on the elevation of, the gentleman next to you is first floor of Dr. Dean. That's...
Okay.
Not, not...
Oh, but yeah.
And elevation of part of a pad that cuts out on the other side. Those are, they are the low points of structure. So we set the elevation of those drains at five tenths of a foot rather than that, six tenths of a foot. And then we graded at about 1%. That's all, that's all we can get, grading to those drains. And when there's vegetation there, there'll be absorption, and we don't have them, and there'll be evaporation and transpiration, so the area will not be muddied. So it still has, as I mentioned, it'll still drain in less than a day. Why didn't you turn the pump back on? Now, one of the things, one of the engineering challenges that we had, we talked to Don about it in the call, is the pump as it should be is at its slowest point, things draining down there, when it cannot overcome the tide. There's no sense in leaving that pump on, no matter how big you make it. And if you put the discharge over the back Jersey barriers and you have a 4.0 tide, you're just gonna be putting it back in, it's gonna flow around and come back, it's gonna settle at a steady state until the tide goes down. And then you can pump it down really quickly. But to suggest that we're gonna solve this problem with mechanical fix and you improve the problem, I'll leave that to the engineers who are studying it. But we looked at the elevation of the intercept that's running down Ninth Street and into the catch basin for that pump, which we had to tap into surface drains. And if there is backflow in that Ninth Street intercept, it will fill the pipes and it will, the water will seep its own level. And if the level is free of, then it'll come back through whatever drainage pipes or whatever gravity feed it has, until it establishes a steady state elevation and until you pump it down. But to suggest that there is a deficiency or a failure in the pump because it can't keep a 4.0 tide out of the street is, which is, let me put it another way. It's an interesting challenge and I think it's folly to suggest that you're gonna beat the tide.
Henry, just two quick things. And I know we have a lot of other things on this agenda and this is a great conversation. Obviously, we're not gonna solve it all tonight, but one, can you tell us when the planting will occur and the things, the recommendations, the solutions that you've heard, I mean, what are the, which of those do you think are most important that we, that we could address now? The top three that they came up with?
261.
So 261, and that's...
261, force everything else. We've been talking to the state about that. And my compliments to the council, if you remember, the state highway said, we're gonna raise that road nine tenths of a foot.
No.
So which was, which was gonna raise to 3.1 and they walked away. Thanks to the mayor and the council, even on state highway, the compromise was 4.1. And that's now, I understand, as construction funds are committed and they're going to do it.
It's happening. But we can, and we can look at the, but I think the angle, is that coming down here? We can look at the drainage on Atlantic and the maintenance...
The drains, we spent $35,000 cleaning out the federal system on Ninth Street back in 2015. The drains that come from the house there were poorly designed and they clog every time. We have water over the sidewalk, so we didn't really clean them thoroughly because every time we cleaned them, we just got the berm. When the berm was there, it felt completely, they clogged right back up, so it's not any time. Now that they have been, the berm has been working like six or eight times, we're gonna use this flood this spring, we're scheduled that day. But they're poorly designed also for those drains, we didn't have, we have low spots on Atlantic Avenue, down towards Kathy's house, where there's no drains. So I don't understand the engineering, the way they, it's a low spot on the road, it's running around Kathy and Ninth House and there's no drain at all there. So that's the main issue with the drains. Paul's looking into correcting that problem, having that, a drain maybe in that area.
Well, before we clean those things out, we, I mean, if they're improper, why wouldn't we just look at...
That's why we have, that's why, to be honest, that's why we have to waste some money cleaning up a little bit, because it doesn't drain. If you drain that...
So you guys are gonna look at that and see if there's something different?
They're pretty poorly designed.
Right. So before we spend money to clean them?
Right.
I mean, they will be cleaned out, but it doesn't get clogged at all.
Oh, you're saying because of the berm, it's not really an issue?
And once, and once they get cleaned out, they may work much better.
Well, they do say because of the berm. But the problem is they're not in the renovation.
Well...
Paul, do you have anything to add to this?
No, I think, you know, we've been talking about the drains along Atlantic, the worst point, if you could say from this plan, you'd be a bit copious of it. It's obvious, you can see where the water's landing along Atlantic.
At elevation of Kathy and Ninth House is like a 3.4 elevation. The road itself is at 3.4. So whatever you raise, that, it still will seep its own level in front of our house at 3.4. So that's the problem when the tide gets to that point, with no drains at all there.
Okay, we'll go ahead and look at these problems and maybe get some solutions and some more discussion going.
Just one question, soil temperatures, we're gonna go. Soil temperatures are high enough before we can plant. There is one concern we have, as the tide runs, it's, it's a high salt content. And that's gonna kill土块 every time it floods behind. It'll kill the wetland plants, the土块. Taking soil samples, we're gonna treat the soil back there to create a, a legitimate planting and growing environment. And, but if we get a time where the tide or salt water is sitting behind that berm because it's coming over there...
Do you plant something different?
Yeah.
Sure.
Something that will push you down.
Sure. And when the road is raised, it won't get wet. It won't get salted and then it'll die eventually. There is a, there will be a maintenance issue a lot if the road is raised. I don't throw, I'm not throwing my hands up, I'm just saying that we will plant in front of the berm and behind the berm with, in the easements areas with wetlands that will tolerate that root tumor. But as you saw, where we planted those and we had three weeks of drought, it didn't survive the drought. Some of them, but we'll get them planted in the, in the middle of spring, maybe mid-spring before the soil temperatures are up. When that's done, we'll still struggle for the maintenance standpoint with maintaining the grasses in the area that is flooded by tidal waters whenever it tops 261.
Thank you, Jean.
Yeah?
I have a question. When they raise 261, they're gonna start integrating at 8th Street, yeah?
Yeah.
They're gonna start at 8th or 9th and they're gonna grade up to 4.1 at rate of burn?
Right.
But it's only gonna still be 3.4, 3.6 in front of my house and in front of Gwen's?
Right.
So even if you had that tide last week, anywhere, the first of the month, it's still gonna come across your pump house versus down at the berm.
That's the challenge in that area, because if we can't...
I understand. But I don't want people leaving here thinking that they're gonna hit with that tide. I've been here since 1950, so you aren't getting rid of it.
Well, and that, that road project won't be completed for at least, at least five years.
I think it's gonna start 2020.
Yeah.
2020, so I know it'll be two years to complete the project.
But it's still not gonna be 4.1, it's gonna be 3.6 or something before it comes across the road.
With that, we're starting in the mon area, because that's gonna raise the same as the berm, so it's gonna try to contain in that area, but water's gonna seep its own level, you're right. No matter, if you get 3.5 and, you know, somewhere it's a low point 3.5, it's gonna seep its own level, so that's an issue with that area. That can't really be solved. It's just the elevation, you have to deal with the elevation that's there.
In closing, we'd just like to maybe do again and work on the things that we can do something about and, you know, 261's down the road and, you know, just to protect our properties and the values of everything and the flooding, we just really wanna work with you to find some solutions on this stuff we can do something about. So if we get back with you, we could sit down and maybe have a different, you know, a more in-depth discussion or if you've got our help, you know, we really want to cooperate with you and, and work to get this done for all of us. So thanks for letting us have a lot of time.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, and thanks to you for the question.
We're gonna go a little off of the agenda and have the Calhoun Health people next, please.
Jean likes to be here.
No, 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 I don't think... Started the day earlier today.
Thank you very much for having us here, Nick. I don't, we don't have a telephone, we can bring one to the side, I apologize. I'm just gonna talk to you, if that's okay.
That's okay.
I'm Dean T., I'm the president of Calhoun Health Medical System and the former Calhoun Memorial Hospital, which is now Calhoun Health Medical Center. So Calhoun Medical System, Calhoun Medical Center, we changed everything around because we were trying to modernize. Actually, in 1976, when the first hospital was built, they raised money in memory of people that had passed, so that's how memorial came into the name. We did a marketing survey a couple of years ago and a lot of people said, we can hear memorial, we can think of people that have passed. So we, we wanted to come and try to get it modernized. We've been doing an awful lot at the hospital in the last three years. I've been at the hospital for six years, I've been the president and CEO for just over three. I'm gonna be here another five years, as long as everything continues to go right. And we started this project to privatize all of our rooms. And there's a lot of questions people have, you know, and we're making all the rooms private. The truth, the answer is, no, not all the rooms. On our behavioral health unit on Level 5, some of those rooms will be semi-private because of the, there's a whole thing around healing when you talk to people with behavioral health, having two people in a room to talk with. But the, what we're gonna do is on the, on all of our main surgical floors, which is your surgical floor, it's the floor where somebody comes in, they have a discus, a heart failure, they have the flu, whatever, all those rooms will be all private. We broke ground last November on the campus itself and basically, today, I'm just so happy to report, we're finally putting things in the air. We've worked for the first six columns that'll be on the first floor and then we'll tie into Level 2 and Level 3. The hospital is a very busy hospital. We take pride in being a community hospital. There's, sometimes people question you, like, you know, in the H cap scores, everybody gets asked if they've been admitted, would you always recommend Calhoun Health as your hospital? And I have to say, you know, and people look at me, whoa, you're the president, what do you mean by that? Well, we do very good at community hospital needs, but if I have a brain to them, I'm probably going to Georgetown and have a taken out there, then I'll come back here for my radiation and chemo because we do those things very, very well. The idea of private rooms is not something new to anybody. About four years ago, I was, I was pushing a lady that had been in the hospital, she was 83 years old at the time, she's in the past, you know, well, you know, getting her out to her car and everything like that, and I just asked her how her stay was. And she said, the stay was fantastic, the nurses were great, the techs were great, the doctors were great, that I'm going home to get some sleep. And it was about that point that I heard the lady just beyond that silent curtain, you can't hear anything on the other side, talk on her cell phone, and she said she talked on her cell phone all night long. So it's, it doesn't promote the kind of healing environment that we like to promote. The other thing that these private rooms will do for us is it will allow us to have a loved one or a family member spend the night. Quite often we have couples that have been, you know, together, many... Quite often, we have couples that have been, you know, together many, many, many years. They don't wanna go home, they don't wanna leave their loved one alone, they're afraid it's something that happened to them while they're gone. Or they just, they, they have that kind of relationship where they're always spending time together. So the rooms that we're going to build will be about three hundred square feet. And there will actually be a pull-up bed in the room, so a loved one or a family member can spend the night with them. The whole idea of taking care of people in Calvert County is just what we do. We're very good at it. We actually have some of the highest safety and quality scores in the state of Maryland. We have the lowest admission rate in the state of Maryland, meaning somebody's been readmitted back to the hospital in thirty days. And we have what we call the highest survivability rate in the state. Mortality rate is just about a half percent. So there's a lot of things that we're doing here that are all for the communities I live in. I take great pride when I go to, and my wife won't go to the grocery store with me anymore because I can't get out of there unless in two hours usually. Hey, you're that hospital guy. Yes, I am. But what we're trying to do is, we're trying to do what's right by the community. This project is being built by funds that we have actually saved and invested and created in capital. But one of the requirements you have from the state of Maryland when you file a certificate of need is you have to have a full and perfect, full and profit portion that you're willing to raise for the project itself. The state approved us for a fifty one million dollar project, so we're gonna raise between three and five million dollars. We've been doing very well in raising those dollars and we've actually had help from other councils in the county itself. And that's why we're here tonight to talk about what we're doing. The rooms themselves, well, there's two poles we have to do. So when you talk about a hospital room, this is a typical, this is what one of the new rooms will look like. It's gonna look exactly like this. In fact, if you wanna come to the hospital and see the exact replica of what this room is, we have one built in the basement. And we build that room exactly the way it's going to be able to build when it's constructed so that our doctors and nurses could come through and look at it. But our nurses and our techs, our housekeepers, our facility folks can tell us what's wrong with that room. One of the things we found out is that there's a closet over on this side over here that was too long and we were actually gonna bow. And in fact, the one that we had bowed with the three ways of putting it in. One of our nurses noticed that the subway tiles that were put in the bathrooms, we had to cut the top one to two inches. And she said, why don't you just lower the ceiling two inches, then you don't have to cut the top. That saved us forty thousand dollars. So that's why we do things like this, we build these rooms. The other thing is, when you come to the hospital, we're gonna rehab the other parts of level two and level three. We've heard a number of people that go to St. John's Hopkins, for example, and they get put in the new tower. They're excited because it's brand new, it's a billion dollar tower, everything's wonderful and built great. However, when they come in and they go to the old tower, they feel like, wow, why am I over here, what's going on there? So we want these rooms to look almost exactly like on both sides, so people don't feel like they're, they're in a lesser room, a room that hasn't been rehabbed and re-done. The other piece that we're doing here is we're gonna have a, an observation unit. Now, you know that if you come to the hospital and you stand upstairs like to rule out a heart, a heart attack, we're gonna put you in an observation status. You're responsible for about twenty percent of that bill because you're not admitted. So when people come upstairs on the floor, our nurses see a person in a bed, they just think it's another person in a bed. They don't realize they're in observation status and we wanna try and get them discharged within twenty-four hours. So we'll have a dedicated observation unit, have dedicated nurses, so that not, we're not incurring extra expense on the citizens of Calvert County that have, you know, probably could have left at two hours or three hours sooner had we been keeping on top of their testing and making sure they get out. The tower itself, we will be adding in, this whole piece right here is under the new tower. One of the things we did is when we're building this tower, we strengthened down below the ground so that someday we gotta build a level four and level five we could add to it. So today, the first six columns went up on that side. The project should be, this tower should be completed in about one year. And then the rehab of the other hospital will take about six months or so to get done. So the whole project will be completed at that point. And, you know, I'll rest a lot easier at night and I won't be down here. And I have Paul's in my back, y'all. So this is the, this is the new tower we're building. And it's, it's a pretty big expansion project. It is fifty one million dollars, but it's money that's well spent to do the right thing by our community, so that's what we're doing. I have Vicky Frazier here with me tonight. Vicky is one of our foundation members, she's also one of our fundraisers, and I wanna thank Vicky for all that she does.
Mark's sister-in-law?
So where is Mark? Let's get that out of his mouth. He's on the investors.
Yeah, I know, I know. Mark and Mary are underway at the Masters.
Okay. So we're, we're not coming here to ask you for a dollar, we're coming here to ask to see if you would be willing to help us contribute to this because of the film farming part that we have. I will tell you that every member of the board, every member of the foundation board, and every member of my executive team has put money forward to this as well. And so we, we wouldn't come out asking for something if we hadn't done it ourselves first. The Calvert Health change has been going on for about a year or so now. We haven't announced it just yet because we have certain numbers we wanna get to before we announce it. That's all I have. Teresa, do you have anything? Vicky, do you have anything?
Any questions that you might have? And you got all the information that you don't have. Don't like the nation.
Thank you. We think of the logo.
I like it, it's clean.
You spend a lot of money on the marketing and logos and everything?
Looks fabulous. Yeah.
We just hired a marketing company to do this and they've been coming up with a logo we wanted. One of our own people kinda drew it up, said this is what it is. Represent the water and the land, which is what Calvert County is more represented.
And it's been gonna be called Calvert Memorial until all this whole part stops.
But I know, the bill's still committed to Calvert Health, but if you wanna write and check the Calvert Memorial, it's still cashing.
Actually, I think the last one I did, yeah. We're right after that stretch.
Can we ask you, please, don't come to see us unless you're absolutely after them, and we'll promise we'll give you great care.
Oh, I'm happy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much for your time.
Um, I'm gonna ask that the USDA, the Van Colson people, are you ready?
Actually, that's, that's, was that again, a piece, yeah, on that. You don't mean that before Kathy, I mean Kathy, you're on the, yeah, food truck.
So if they have multiple doors. That is good. So an update on food truck regulations. And what we have been working on, planning commission's been working on for many months, has been an effort to write recommendations for what would be food truck amendments or allowing food trucks in the town amendment to the current zoning laws. A lot of time, we've spent researching, collecting data, and having several meetings that we've been talking amongst, primarily our planning commission, however, there've been public meetings. We didn't have a lot of input from outside sources. So what we wanted to do primarily by holding a public meeting on Saturday, March third, was to engage the business community and have a discussion to talk about that. We know will be more directly impacted, at least we wanted to engage in these discussions. It was a very insightful meeting, it was very well attended, which was great. There was a lot of interest and all of you were there, so thank you for attending and participating in that. A lot of, a lot of really good information came out of that. A lot of things we had thought about and that maybe proposed a different recommendation. A lot of things we hadn't thought about. So with that, coming out of that meeting, we met in a couple of weeks ago. We had our March planning commission meeting, which was the first time we've really been, again, had people who had previously had attended the Saturday session or had previously been involved in discussions and a few others who had really not participated to that point. Two things we are proposing going forward. One is to not propose specific recommendations for this season, we'll say each season. We're gonna look at stepping back a bit and having further engagement with the community, more discussions, and also to propose trials for the current season. Working with the town to come up with potentially some events that would be food truck based, not, not tagged on necessarily to other events already planned for the town, but maybe that is one option. Those, those are things that we'll discuss as we go forward. The second is to have focus groups and to do more informal discussions versus what have been perceived more as meetings. Planning commission talking, others talking. We wanna really have an informal venue to do it. So we're proposing to do three focus groups, one hour each with around ten people max. And really getting more to an informal roundtable discussion. Easels, not necessarily presentation at all, it's really to sit down and have everyone be able to talk and talk about what they feel. Now, the point will be not to say yes or no to food trucks. It's really to focus an hour of what could a food truck amendment look like if we were to go that route. So we're stepping back from food trucks are coming, this is happening, there's no action intended in these sessions. It's really just to have a very informal discussion with primarily people who've already come to the table with ideas and thoughts and to really go back and hash out each of the issues and say, okay, well, here's something that could happen, we'll make it this happens. We've been working three different meetings, so we'll have three different outcomes from those meetings. So then bring it back to the planning commission meeting in April. Sounds a little ambitious to go all this by the end of April, but we're gonna work back to Stacy. So we'll, we'll then use that to revise and refine some of the recommendations that will be implemented or brought forth as we go forward. And also come up with how these trials and what these trials would look like. Also ambitious to probably say we're gonna do three this summer because Stacy's probably broke out of the room. But, you know, really to look at how, how these might be different implementations in the future. Food trucks concentrated, food trucks spread around town, a lot of, a lot of the things that have come up. It's really to, to look at it in a more trial basis. So before anything's written, and so we, we've gone through this effort. The one-hour sessions are really meant to be very informal. We don't really spend a lot of time revisiting what we've already presented and talked about. So like really have people who have been engaged to say, okay, let's just hit these points because we really want to listen to everyone and be able to go forward and say what we've heard and what we've thought, you know. Because it's really, really a, an effort for economic development for all. This is for the town, it's not meant to leave anyone behind. It's certainly not an intent at all to hurt businesses. So we really wanna look at this as a candy and win-win situation. So what could, yeah, without the burden of this is happening, this is what's going to happen. So with these sessions, the, the thought for that would be to have several business owners or members of the business community in each. A food truck operator, one, at least one. Someone from the EDC, we'd like to have someone from council participate. The planning commission will lead the discussion, however, will not be giving our specific opinion or thoughts on this. But it's really just to capture it. I'm gonna do what I do in programming sessions with clients is just write down what we hear and pretend that it's all gonna be good at the end. So we write it down, they will capture it. And we'll, but prior to that, we also want to put all the, we are going to put all of the research that we've had to date on the website so that people can see what we've been working at and talking about. So that'll be in advance in these meetings.
Is this what you're gonna try to do for the end of April?
Yes.
This year? People we're in right now?
This month. We just don't wanna lose the momentum. Yes, we do, we're gonna revisit all the conversations we already had. We've had plenty of meetings already.
We've already got dates.
We're proposing two sessions on Saturday morning, April twenty first. One starting at eight thirty before business is open, one at ten. And then another one on Tuesday, April twenty fourth in the evening, for anyone who wants a call. So this will be seven o'clock in the evening. That's two days before our planning commission meeting on the twenty sixth. Yes, it's the rest of the week. We're going to send out.
You said on the twenty first, you said at ten?
Yeah, eight thirty, ten on the twenty first, and then seven o'clock on the twenty fourth.
Are you guys gonna be reaching out to these individuals?
Yes, yes. Stacy's drafted an email that's going out, we're gonna direct to, we know, we know who has primarily been involved. Of course, it's open to the public, who have to be above the age, but we like to make it more into a more engaging conversation in a roundtable, I guess. And listening, just let people talk. Every idea is a good idea.
Appreciate how much thought you guys have put into the process and really wanna hear and have the best outcome for everybody.
It needs to be.
And Michael, you mentioned that you wanted to also possibly set up trials of food trucks. One of the topics you might wanna actually address during the focus groups is what metrics we could use to kinda gauge those trials, like if it's successful or unsuccessful. So maybe that could be one of the topics you're gonna talk about. What would be the metrics?
And one other point we discussed as well is to actually reach out to other towns of similar size or scope who have gone through this. We don't know of many towns or any towns really has these, talk, we've looked at, that have rescinded, you know, these regulations as they've gone through. So we'd really like to hear from third-in-order businesses who've gone through it, who might have not had a positive approach to it and have seen a positive, or maybe just to get some feedback from that, I think would be insightful as well.
That would be great, yeah.
Thanks for all your efforts. We appreciate your time.
It will be sending emails to all of you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Mark's calendars. Yes, because we need individuals to be, which is gonna be this focus group.
All right, so speaking of economic development, can we put the other slide up? I just, I, real quick, I'll go through these slides. Just to bring you guys up to speed, we've talked about this a little bit. This is the USDA Business Development Grant Opportunity that Bay Arts, a nonprofit here in town, had initially submitted a letter of intent. I think I told you a meeting or two ago that they had submitted that. And they were called back to submit a full proposal. So that was excellent. Ken Hennings, who's retired from USDA, he's been a big supporter of this. There's, Calvert hasn't received a lot of these grants. We are considered rural, and so it's an exciting opportunity to look at some economic development right here in our, in our town. So the whole, the purpose, I'm just gonna do a quick recap, tell you where they are. A couple of quick things, so the actual full grant application is due April eighteen. We, when they submitted the letter of intent, we said that we supported them. They had a check a box with support. At that time, we didn't have to give a specific dollar amount of support. So I wanna bring you up to speed, they're still working on this. My thought was in terms of process, if there's any questions, comments, I'll kinda go through this, that I can bring back to them and share with them after, if that works. Get those from you guys, questions or comments, as they put the final touches on this. And they will be here to answer any questions next week before they fully submit it. So they haven't, they don't have an exact amount that they're asking for tonight. That's one, obviously, we need to know, but it's not gonna be a huge amount. I, don't quote me the exact, but I think it's gonna be in a couple thousand dollar range for the town. That, that's, that's what I'm hearing right now. So if you have thoughts about a max or anything that you want me to bring back to them, I, I can do that as well. So again, the, some of the goals is obviously to build on the vision of North Beach, the whole Maryland Sustainable Community, where Jane goes. So we have that, that designation, our focus on the arts, and also being a tourism destination.
We have two, two out of three right now.
Uh, we have.
We get solid at two out of three.
Yes, we have a solid two out of three, we're working on the third, right? We have our, we have our Sunrise Garden Arts and other things. So this, this builds on that. The applicant in this, they are sort of five oh one C three, this is a big part of North Beach. They have since January done community events, so this is, you know, ties in with the whole training, helping people with skills, things that can be turned into businesses. They've done things around beekeeping, writing, rain gardens. So it's, it's the broad definition of arts. So it's fine arts, visual arts, culinary arts, right? So that is the expansion is to go into the culinary piece. We'll see if this works, and it does. So the focus of the grant truly is to create jobs, right? So they wanna hire, they will hire artists, including culinary instructors, have a studio manager. So different instructors to actually teach these different classes. The idea that there'll be an arts incubator and maybe even try outselling some of these things. So it's giving people an opportunity to learn some skills, to get training, and then to turn these into entrepreneurial efforts. These are just some of the examples and things that they've, they've already been doing. So body care products training, cooking classes. So body care products training, cooking classes, teaching people how to dehydrate, ties into local farmers, helping them to expand their business and create new products. Stop with Randy if I give a question.
Yeah, I did. How much are they asking, how much are they going to draw?
They're working on the budget now, that's why I don't have the exact.
Okay, because I'm looking right there, about ten or fifteen thousand just for what you have listed up there.
I think based on what Ken Hennings, you know, he knows how much these things fund. He was saying that if they ask in total around seventy, he thought that would be a fine number. And I don't think it's going to be that much money.
I'm just looking at just some of the equipment there, it's going to be ten or fifteen thousand going in anyway by the time you get the market rate, these managers and process.
And that's where they're trying to make sure that they, you know, accurately figure that out.
And I'm asking that because if they ask for seventy thousand dollar grant, we may not be able to get by with two, it may be a matching grant where it's seventy-five, twenty-five. Do you know anything?
The more, you know, the more support, but-
No, but I mean, you know what I mean, some of these grants say, okay, we'll give you this, but you have to match.
They don't specify in the grant that, you know, must be forty percent or thirty percent of the total, but what Ken said is that, you know, the bigger the match, the better, but they don't specify a number like some grants do.
So that was my second question.
Yeah, they, yeah, they don't, but you know, so the closer, the better. That's, that's a good question. So yeah, these are some of the equipment needs that they're looking at, commercial dehydrating processing center, stainless steel table, compartment sink, and a demonstration table for cooking and teaching and doing art demos. I only have five slides, you guys, so. So looking at the sustainability, right? So it's one thing to get a grant, and what happens when the money runs out, that's always the big question. I'm just being so sensitive.
Put it down.
Being a tourist and kind of nature, right? So they, this provides opportunities to develop things. Their, their vision is big, is looking at training people, teaching, having these things turned into businesses, but being this incubator where people can try things out and not, with them not out of curiosity, right? And then hopefully go on to be able to sell their own things and be self-sustaining. So those are just some examples of the things that people would be able to do. You see there at the bottom, you know, canned dry goods, I know everybody loves dry kale, tomatoes and herbs, lotion, these different, these different products. And part of the sustainability, so looking at these, you know, they want to hire some people to teach these things, they'll be charging for the classes, so that, you know, these wouldn't be just things that are given away, but just to get the startup, paying for the equipment. What? I didn't judge it. Is it not a time?
You have a time going here.
Okay, is that what it is?
Someone set it up for a time.
Okay.
It's all fast.
Yeah, yeah, you set up for it.
It's all fast.
Yeah, exactly.
It's like eight thirteen.
Yeah, exactly. So, so we've got the classes, people paying for these classes will, you know, cover it long-term, that'll be part of the sustainability, again, just having entrepreneurs, hopefully they can get out of the incubator and fly on their own, graduate. And, you know, one of the thoughts is this is a great feedback group, they can get feedback, what's working here, what kind of things would be selling, use the incubator to try out some of those things and add to the, to the business model. So here's two things that I know so far that they were asking about is, for the incubators and people that are trying these things out, could we have, could they have an in-kind table at, this is killing me, at the farmer's market? And then also funds, actually for the scholarships, so they're writing a grant to pay for the equipment, but if there's people in town who can't afford the classes, could it be a scholarship, they learn skills, it ties in with the entrepreneurial effort. I will get the exact dollar amount, but like I said, I think it's in the couple of thousand dollars range. So they're putting this together, it's due April 18th, so again, my thought is they can send us something before next Thursday's meeting and see what, and get an actual budget, and then go on and make a decision next Thursday.
Bay Arts is around.
I think that on my own for, I think it's close to the decade, I believe. Yeah, that's my, I want to be, we can find that out.
And they're looking to handle all this, the cooking, everything within town, somewhere around town.
Yes, so they're actually-
Stainless steel, and all the stuff they're looking for, they're looking to do right here, and they're going to pay for that.
The grant will pay for the purchase of all the equipment, so that's their, that's what they're asking USDA.
As they found the place.
Yeah, I mean, I shared with you guys in the first meeting, they are looking to rent space inside Chesapeake Family.
But they think, you can't, they put it in here, they don't, they don't set up for that.
According to them, they've already scoped that out, and it worked. Yeah. They've got, there's actually space in there for that. So if we want a drawing or something, like if you guys want to see, well, where would this stuff go? You know, what's that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, their, their plan when they reopen was to do something like this.
Right, so Bay Arts is the, is the actual applicant, and they will run the space, facilitate it in there. So it's going to be a little bit of a partnership, but it's Bay Arts is the applicant, and they're the ones who will be running this.
Yeah, because they've been talking about getting a free, free, a trip sink for quite a while, actually, as I say, the first time. Yeah, there's, can't remember what the issue was, but it's a health department kind of issue. Nothing from Austin says it's a health department.
Right, yeah, that obviously would have to be, so if you have, I mean, if you have questions, if you want, will they come next week? I mean, I'd love to get a reaction, are we still on board with this? Does this sound like something we want to support, a little bit of a dollar amount?
Will they be able to have, will they have their number tied down next week?
Well, they have to, because the grants due April 18th.
Well, okay.
Yeah. So that might, yeah, so before, my thought was, before Thursday's meeting, you guys need to see a draft or something exactly.
I think we need to see some numbers.
Yeah.
I'll put it on the agenda for next week.
Are there any other specifics you want me to make sure, just a draft of the proposal?
And maybe use confirmation, because that means that they can actually support this as a part of it. I assume it's part of the proposal, but it isn't.
Right. And the space that can actually happen.
I mean, so like, I'm just hoping our board.
Exactly. Okay.
Our town group or whatever, our group of Atlantic ads would like to do five hundred dollars for the scholarship side of it.
Who what?
Our little, our group of presenters would like to do five hundred dollars for the scholarship side of it.
Do you guys have a formal group?
No.
Just-
We wanted to support it.
It's great.
Yeah, the Women of Atlantic.
I love it, we don't have a name. The Ladies of Atlantic.
TV show before you know it.
I love it. That's fabulous. I will share that with them. It is a great thing. I mean, we, you know, we talk about economic development and job creation and incubators, and this is an opportunity, and they, they've already been invited back, so the state saw their initial plan and said, please submit a full proposal, but they really want to see some support from the towns. So, all right, if there's anything else, you guys can email me, but I'll make sure that we have that before next week.
I'm tempted to.
What's it? Are you serious? That's seven hundred dollars. Are you serious?
I'm going to get the garden club.
Oh my god. Wait, but how much with the garden club? I have an option there. You'll get something with the garden club? I know, okay. How many do we have together? I love this. You know, if we can get letters from people, I mean, the garden club, we could get a letter, I mean, you know, Mike, I don't know how we do it, the Ladies of Atlantic, I mean, we could, you know.
At least they're not the ladies.
I love it. All right, we'll figure out how to do that, but thank you all, good, thank you all so much. You're such a good town. Yeah, all right, that's it.
Why don't you do the budget?
I thought you were going to do the partner.
What can you do first?
Yeah, please do that.
Karen, do you want to help?
Wait, wait a minute, Karen.
Could you have the space agreements up there? So that I don't, I don't know if they're available.
This is for my building, so you can have like a full schedule.
Never do this.
If we're able to get something for the control.
Do you want to know far, toxic reading?
Okay, well.
Sorry.
Good.
Like, we did send power point. How do you do? Who is that?
Just put a heckle over the pagers in there, please.
That's okay.
Well, vacation.
Does this, well.
Everything, here's the shot.
Okay, so I'm Karen Molinas, I'm on the Environmental Committee, I also have Guy Stone, who's our chair, and Jeff Neus, who's our secretary, now in Premer, and then James, our liaison, who else is on our, anybody else on?
Veronica.
Veronica, that's Krista is on. And just, one of the things is if you, if you haven't seen our committee presentations coming up, you know, in the recent ones, I just wanted to refresh everybody's memory of the mission of the Environmental Committee. So the Environmental Committee is a town committee appointed by the council, and the mission of the committee is to ensure the ongoing preservation of the town's wetlands, natural shoreline, and green spaces so that residents and visitors may enjoy them now and in the future. We promote a healthy, attractive, sustainable North Beach through green initiatives and public education. So with that mission in mind, one of the things that-
Good job.
It's an F key. So one of the things that the committee has been working on, it's like the living shoreline has been our Bay project, and one of our concerns is, you know, how do we maintain that living shoreline, now we need staff resources. So one of the things that we've been promoting is advocating for a park manager. And so I just want to give you some of the committee's recommendations, and then as you discuss the budget, how this new position would be put into place through budget process. So a park manager is, we do need somebody who's oversight of the town parks that we have. We have a diversity of them that have routine maintenance and management, just the people and the dogs and anybody else who's using these parks. We also need to educate our residents about these environmental values we have for the town, and why some of these places have been set aside, have been developed, and have been maintained the way they are. We have a lot of events that really, these parks are involved in, whether it's a wedding at Wetland Overlook Park, or whether it's an activity along the Bayfront. So that's really important. And then one thing that we've, as a volunteer committee, would want a council liaison, is having a staff liaison is really an important aspect, because a lot of initiatives, you know, we don't want to think that, you guys, keep doing it, do it, you know, because we know you're all busy, so actually looking at a staff liaison to help focus activities that are related to our mission. So for the town parks, we do have four major parks, Sunrise Gardens, Wetlands Overlook, the Walton Beach Nature Preserve, which is where the living shoreline is, and Callis Park. But we also have a lot of other natural features that could benefit from having somebody be responsible for the real management and maintenance and enhancement of them, including all the tree wells. We know the tree wells are, could use some loving care sometimes. But, you know, other things, you might, I think about the green roof of the town hall. You know, how is that part of our natural area? So there's a lot of places in this town, and as everyone walks, there will be some natural area that this park manager would be in charge of. So just to go through, for the Sunrise Garden, most of our parks, you'll see, we need just monitoring what's happening there, just to make sure that it's being used appropriately. Trash is our big, one of our big problems, you know, so, to, right now, that's being done by Donnie and his crew and beach patrol, so that may not stop, but now instead of Donnie having to monitor trash cans, the park manager would be managing the trash issues at these facilities. Also, having somebody who would have the skills to look at the maintenance issues from a natural and environmental perspective, so that they are maybe key to healthy parks. Wetlands Overlook Park, just, some of our parks do have landscaping contracts, so the park manager would be responsible for overseeing that contract, to make sure that the landscapers are mowing what we want them mowed, perhaps planting what we want them to plant, trimming trees that need to be trimmed, all of that. It would also help with all the events, preparing sites for the different events, to make sure they're up to the quality level that some of the renting facility would want. So the living shoreline is something that has its own special set of needs, of all these parks have different needs, and environmental concern has a maintenance plan, which they'll be, I believe, will be responsible for maintaining for the short term, but we do need somebody to help oversee that contract and learn what it is that we need to do to maintain this shoreline, so that would be part of it. And Callis Park, which is much more of a, our most active, besides the boardwalk, our active recreation park, you know, with just assisting with playground sections and thinking about this park as a natural space that people can enjoy the natural features of the park and not just focus on the playgrounds. As I mentioned, the staff liaison, that they would be the liaison with the Environmental Committee, the Green Team helped maintain our Sustainable Maryland. If you ask Veronica Owens, it's a lot of work to get that, and so having a staff person to help with that. The Tree Committee, which is a legally required committee of town, that we do not have at this point, that they would help reinvigorate that initiative. And then for things like we have some garden club and other community organizations being that staff liaison, so when those organizations, when Bay Arts wants to do some sort of environmental health program, there's a staff person who can be involved. And just, I just put a couple of the town events there. So our recommendation is that they would primarily be a three-season worker, basically working full-time in spring, summer, and fall, with the secondary work schedule in the winter, to assist as needed for events, or for maintenance projects, for storm response, for, you know, other needs of the town that would suit fit. We would have them work on renewing our Tree City USA program, that's where the Tree Committee comes involved. They would work with that Keep America Beautiful and America in Bloom project, so that we can maintain that certification. One of the things the Environmental Committee is very interested in is the environmental issues that we can educate the public about, and the three that often come up in our committee are the ospreys, making sure people aren't harassing our poor ospreys who live very close to us, horseshoe crabs, understand their ecology, and then just that green living of all the features in this town that have been committed to being sustainable and have a green head cap. And then, if you remember, what was it, a year ago, push-in the water access? How do we increase the ability for people to put a kayak, canoe, some other, you know, human-powered boat in on this bay? So I think that would be a real good priority. So that just gives you, not very much on it, so it just gives you an idea of what we're coming for and that when it comes up in the budget, that this really is a need, that I think any of the town staff could say, why don't you guys have somebody, when you have to get Wetlands Overlook Park ready, you have somebody who really, you know, that's their job to do that, and you don't pull them away from storm water management, or road repair, or maintaining infrastructure, because they are the park infrastructure.
So I think having some expertise in that, in that area. Yeah. Talking about the plants, or knowing what they're looking at in terms of erosion, or-
Yeah, and you know, this, the town has put money into these sites, and I think, you know, that, that is, that's the trade-off. You want these places that make the town attractive, livable, that tourists want to come, and you know, we've got to put the resources in there, so, you know, volunteers can only do so much, you do need that staff. And do you have any questions or anything?
Michael and Pat, according to my calendar, could be wrong, but 21 April is Plant the Town, so that might not be a good day for this session in the morning. Is that...
I don't think...
Okay, oh, okay. It's not moved in my calendar, so. Never mind.
I'll take your spreadsheet. Picture for the hall.
Okay, come. Hello. All right, I'm anxious to get through the budget. Glad to present, glad we're all here. It's an exciting year for me, I believe, because I was so impressed by all the gaming revenue.
Is that before and after the Wood and Earl's?
Yeah, that's ours.
That's ours, the voters. Because I think they get some off the ball.
Yeah, so I was impressed by that. Anyway, I just want to go over some of the notes that we have, and you have your spreadsheets, but if I could go through the notes.
Yeah, okay.
The real property tax revenue, what we're proposing is to keep the tax rate the same, no increases to the tax rate. The estimated assessable real tax property rate, the constant yield, the assessed value, and I'm sorry if I've called, is $245 million, which has gone up just a little bit over last year, but we're actually, we fall into the exempt range for recertification because we have not grown that much of tax revenue. And if we maintain the rate that we have, we still will not exceed that exemption. So the next item that's on our budget process is the refuse collection revenue. And based on what I found as far as tipping fees and service contract, it looks like what we're paying now, $295, which was last changed in 2014, so you've been paying $295 for all your trash. We're talking recycling, twice a week pickup, all the clean, community cleanups, $295 since 2014. And what I'm proposing in our budget to help offset some of the increased tipping fees is that that will go up to $327 per household.
Question on that. Is our contract for trash up for bidding or...
No, this is, this, 2017 is the last three-year renewal for this contract.
It's 2020.
That's what I just wanted to...
When did we check, September?
Yeah, I think you asked me, I sent it to you. So we're still in that cycle, which helps protect us from some of the expenses. The local income tax and other, it's estimated based on the state audit, and then, you know, last year they had that overpayment issue, which they finally forgave, so that was beneficial to us. How we use the revenue? You right now, give James some kudos. It's going to be about the same as it was last year, but in 2020, it'll change significantly. We'll get our highway revenue restored to us, and that's guaranteed, or actually, it's not guaranteed, but it's legislated for a five-year period. So if everything stays the same in 2020, 2025 would be great.
And Scott Hancock says it gives him five years to get the plan ready to go on after that.
Well, at this point, he'll need five years, yes. Rental licenses. In your packets, and I apologize for my call, in your packets, you've seen some of the costs for employees and what it costs to have an event, what it costs to run the waterfront, how many man-hours it costs, and you've also seen in there this code enforcement breakdown or what code enforcement costs. And as you can see from that breakdown I provided you, revenue does not cover all the expenses for code enforcement, nor will it ever cover it all. Because, and we've talked about this in the past, we do not want the big town that generates revenue by penalizing its residents. So we want everyone to have code enforcement and do the right thing, so that's why we're around, but at the same time, we don't want to continue violations and revenue generated from that and dependent upon salaries for it. It just doesn't look right. But we are almost 50% rental. And with that said, in your fee schedule that's coming up at the next session, there's a proposal to increase the rental license, which is a three-year license, from $150 to $250. And you'll see that broken out if you look at your code enforcement schedule and all the expenses that go with that code enforcement. So it's something to consider. The other issue that we talked about was the gaming, gaming, electronic machines revenue. We finally have three years in which we can project what we plan to get during FY19, and like I said, I was very impressed with how that number has grown. FY15, we collected $229,000. FY16, it was $285,000, and FY17 was $390,000. So if you average those all three years together, it's $301,000. And we were worried a little bit about the bridge construction and impacting the revenue for that, and it does not seem to be a factor, which I believe. The beach fees, now county residents, we have not estimated any changes for that in our May session. We need to work through what the water print costs are and if we anticipate any changes to that. We made a large increase last year. I'm not sure how we'll approach it this year, but that's a determination as we go forward. There's items in there for the shirt check, what the inventory is, and then what the sales possibly could be for that. Again, there's no history, and we're estimating, and we're taking a very conservative look at that. And again, that's broken out in here. Dragon Boat races, it's a wonderful bit, but again, there's no revenue to offset any of the expenses to the dragon boat. So in your employee breakdown and the events, you'll see what the dragon boat actually costs.
Exactly, isn't it?
Yeah, it's in there, it's in your employee breakdown costs too. Okay. Then we have New Year's Eve, there's no New Year's Eve event planned for 2019. I think it's pretty obvious lines. And then the town council salary, there's a new item that allows you to incur some expenses when you travel and hours that you promote the town, North Beach, so we're proposing a $3,000 a year salary for each one of the council members, similar to like most of the other towns in Southern Maryland do for their cash flow.
Okay, now, is that, is that in addition to or place off our affiliate group, that's where we have...
That's in addition to. Because those items are already included in your analysis.
I have one, is there a way we can make that...
I mean, it's not being factated.
Is there a way we can make that non-impacty?
I have not, I do not believe that.
Oh, I don't know, that's why I asked.
Yeah, I'll look for you, but I do not believe that. Anything over $750, $600, I'd go for a $10.
Unless you get it in gift cards.
We're not going for it. No, I mean, I was just asking.
My first, my, off the top of my head is, it's income, it's over $600, you're going to go with $10. Yeah, either way.
Either way, exactly.
I was sort of more so curious. No, I was just curious.
Okay, we talked a little bit about the license inspection code salary, and there's an increase proposed for the seasonal part-time code enforcement officer, and that's broken down for you in that plan.
Okay, does EDC mean something different with this?
No, it's coded under economic development fund. It should have been F, not EDC fund. But let's find it on there, and you saw that, if you looked at the EDC budget, you see the breakdown. The park ranger is also proposed under EDC fund as an economic development tool. The licensing for the software for code enforcement is $6,000 a year. That's a brand-new expense, but we've never had such an expansive software system to track, track the things needed for code enforcement. I feel like going forward, it's going to be a plus, I believe, I believe. And then website notification system, virtual town hall, and the notification system, that's a $2,500 expense, that's new. So that's in addition to the items that we already had expended in FY19, but that's an add-on. And then marketing supplies, there's a breakdown in the packet for the proposals from each department. You can see what those items are specifically. Critical areas, there's a $4,000 grant that goes towards Rick for his zoning and permit review, which is a, we've been gracious enough to receive that every year. Brown Road Parking, Mr. Russo, that's the main, the rates will remain the same from this year to that year next year. And then new item in there is the storyboard. The Environmental Committee has proposed a storyboard for Walton Preserve, and I think they've proposed two, but the mayor has included one for this year. He wants to see how that goes. What else? Annual maintenance agreement, this is the second year of the third-year contract. There was some give and take in that, and there were some other items added, for example, all bump outs that we now have on Chesapeake Avenue that need to be planted and maintained. So with every action, there's a reaction. And then again, dragon boat races, we need to talk about that. All right, let's switch to the next page. Sunrise Celebration Art, so it's kind of a minor expense. Yes.
One more page.
One more page? It's sensitive. We'll put it down. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Anyway, American in Bloom, there's a breakdown for American in Bloom because that is an increase over last year, and I wanted you to understand why we're asking for that. And then Welcome Center wages, the minimum wage goes up to, is it 11.25 this year?
Ten, ten. Nine forty-five to ten, that is what you have here.
Yeah, it's like 85 cents, and that's a significant change. So again, you'll see, you saw the hours in the employee breakdown, you can only imagine. Resident Deputy budget, I'm still waiting from Carroll County to see what that looks like. I do not know that. And then I'll give you a little more detail on the trash and landfill fees. And then the elephant in the room is the sewer use revenue. I got the budget from Chesapeake Beach, Lauren, very impressive. I was most impressed by the $138,000 increase over last year. So I've asked for some detail since, you know, I have, but I'm waiting here for Lauren, who's always very prompt. But with that said, that's $138,000 that has to be paid, and the only way to pay it is through user fees. So I have not come up with a rate, but the revenue and expenses that you see in your budget are what's needed. But I still haven't formulated a rate that would best of work for everyone, because you're still trying to achieve your conservation plan from last year, which involved dropping a tier and also reducing the minimum to 8,000 from town. So all those things are in plan of all that.
There's a lot of different parts for that.
So 8,000 is just for, just for North Beach?
That's just our portion. If you look at that sheet I gave you, the breakdown, you know, we're four partners to this plant. It's Chesapeake Beach, it's Anamal County, Carroll County, and North Beach. So ours is 24% of that plant.
A question on that sheet from over there, under the variable income.
Yeah.
Everybody in that section, what other Chesapeake Beaches, that one panel? So that's just my question there.
Well, I always like to, I always like to wait until she responds against me.
Yeah, I just, that flagged me as a question.
And I do believe they had to hire a new superintendent.
I know, I heard they added some new staff, didn't they? They added some... Yeah, they added some operators.
Right, and the E and R is finally finalized, so now we're fully operational. I imagine that has some impact. There's a lot to it. But the one thing that's also in the sewer is the flow meter.
Yes.
Flow meter from Greenwood Avenue into town, North Beach. And I was telling Paul this, it was about December. Now, our financials are closed, we've already submitted our audit to the state, but I got a bill in December for a revised flow usage from the plant for us, and it was $99,000. Okay? So if you really think about that, it was $100,000, it should have been extra last year that we might have been able to address, but now we have to address it.
That was, that was the additional bill?
Yes, yes. But until we have accurate flows back and forth, we really can't dispute it. So then, the water benefit revenue, the only thing on the water benefit revenue is that may change a little bit, and the only reason I say that is we have two applications in for grants and loans. They may forgive a certain part of the loan and make it grants, we don't have to repay the whole thing, but I don't know that, so I've got a plan for the worst-case scenario. So those two things are in there, so wellhouse and replacement of means, which would help our revenue if we were not getting zero on our meter. But that's the overview of the budget. The individual items and the, my purpose tonight was to merely familiarize you with the budget, to give you the details of it and the supplemental data so that you could get prepared for the May 3rd, it's May 3rd, right, work session? That's the big one. That's the, that's the one where we're going to hash it out. So in the next few weeks, and I won't be here next week, so don't look at me. Next few weeks, I'll send you what I'm proposing for the water and sewer rates so that you're aware before this gets posted, okay, because I don't know what they are yet. And I'm trying to flip-flop the water and the sewer a little bit, because sewer's always higher, but just so the impact's not too bad. So does anyone have any questions that are not addressed for you? Or any piece of paper that you don't think you have, that you need?
Gold and not trees.
That's what I said today.
Yeah. I don't have any questions, but I would like to discuss or at least bring up a couple of things.
Okay.
I spent some hours going through all of this, so thank you all for bringing them together. I spent several hours going through all of this, so thank you, I have to bring them all together. And we're gonna discuss this tonight, but I do wanna bring it up as things I certainly wanna discuss coming to the next work session. The first one being the waterfront. So, looking at these numbers, in the budget right now for waterfront operations for FY nineteen.
What page, Paul?
I don't have a page. It's the main spreadsheet.
It's page six.
Six pages in on that main spreadsheet. Oh yeah, she is a page at the bottom, page six. So you'll see waterfront operations, this is the expense category, showing a budget of three-hundred-and-thirty-eight thousand, did we see that? So I had Joanne pull the numbers from FY seventeen, which is the only numbers we have that are actually complete at the moment. We had a revenue of two-hundred-and-seventy-nine thousand. Now, looking at the last report from Richard back in September, we're actually running eighteen thousand dollars under that this year in FY seventeen. I'm sorry, FY eighteen, excuse me. So, what that means is we can project right now that if we were to approve this budget of three-hundred-and-thirty-eight thousand, we would have a shortfall of about seventy-six thousand dollars, based on revenue, which seems rather high. So what I'm gonna recommend is that we actually ask Richard to come back with an impact assessment, that we actually cut this by thirty thousand, and then another one with sixty thousand, what would the impact be with waterfront operations, that you're trying to bring this in line, what the revenue is. The seventy-six thousand dollar shortfall is pretty significant, especially when we're talking about another shortfall with waterfront, there are hails, which I realize is a different, different part of money, but it's something I think we need to look into. So I'm gonna ask Richard to do that, come back with an impact assessment. If we were to cut that budget, what would the actual impact be on the waterfront?
What were the two hundred and sixty?
Three thousand to sixty thousand.
And Paul, for the FY eighteen, did you go into April, May, and June revenue that's not there yet?
That's why I used the FY seventeen numbers, 'cause that's what we'd said. But the latest numbers I have from back in September, when the waterfront was actually still open, was showing us eighteen thousand one hundred and six dollars under Walt's hit in the previous year, and as far as revenue, so if we were to project that out, and let's say that stays the same, that's a total of seventy-six thousand.
What was called, we lost, as of last year, we lost all of that.
Why, it's a weather driven?
Yeah, because it's a weather driven.
I understand.
Yes, I mean, that's the bad thing about doing this is, we gotta try to get a bit...
Six is the revenue on...
Also, you're saying, what, like, what would he cut if we had to address that something?
Exactly, if we were to cut by sixty thousand, what would the impact be with the waterfront, thirty thousand? So we can figure out what we wanna do, I think that's something that the situation needs to gather as far as approving this budget.
No, no.
Like, if they closed down for a Saturday because of rain, nobody, nobody would have scheduled a paint, but that's, that's a loss of revenue back then, of how much it would be if you don't like that. I mean, as much as I can say, and I shudder, like, how much we lose a drag boat there.
Well...
Yeah, seriously, 'cause that's usually very nice.
We have it in there now.
Okay, so what was the other thing, Paul, you were looking at?
For waterfront, or?
No, no.
Two things.
So that's the waterfront, I've got other things as well I want to talk about.
Okay, go ahead.
Waterfront, the next one is the shirt shack. So I think, I guess on a personal level, I'm still just opposed to having a government organization, municipality, run a business, which is basically what the shirt shack is, in my opinion. And, so that's one of my concerns, should we even begin this business of running a shirt shack? Number two is, you look at the numbers that are proposed here, it's showing an expense of eight thousand eight hundred, and it's showing a total revenue of eight thousand six hundred twenty-eight. So we're actually projecting loss on the shirt shack. So not only are we running a business, we're probably gonna end up impacting the bottom lines of other businesses in the town, but we're also projecting loss at this point on this endeavor. So kind of what are we, what are we getting out of the shirt shack? What is the, what's the goal of this thing?
Can I address that? Several months ago, if you recall, at one of our work sessions, I proposed that we put out an RFP to see if there was a business that can run it. At least put that out there to see what came back. I don't, I don't know what the status of that is, that was...
I don't think it happened for a minute.
I think the other part of your question is, what do we get out of it? I think the, you kind of have to look at it as a marketing piece. I mean, the idea was to promote the town, so I think it's truly a marketing effort, at least that's how I, how I see it. But, but I, you know, I thought we were all kind of in agreement that we at least wanted to do an RFP to see what happened, so I don't know what that stands.
I don't know what I'm saying.
Do you not have any information on RFP? Would my budget reflect as the expenses and revenue as we anticipate?
I mean, it's pretty clear the budget right now is, we're not gonna do an RFP, or maybe it happened, it didn't work, I don't know the exact details of that, but clearly there's planning here to actually operate this, the town operate this, right? That's what this budget is telling us. Right, I mean, is that accurate?
That's accurate, and to my knowledge, there is no RFP at this time.
So I think we just need to perhaps work this out.
'Cause I think the night that we talked about that, I think Mayor wasn't here. I don't know what happened as the next, at nine o'clock, my memory serves me, but we did talk about it at a work session, and I thought there was consensus to do that.
I would recommend the council talk to the mayor directly. He may have...
The staff has not been instructed by the mayor to do RFP.
I'm definitely in support of marketing, marketing the town, that, you know, not everything is necessarily a revenue center or creator, so, you know, sometimes things, things are costly, they come back hopefully in other ways, with tourism or things like that, as long as it's not a huge, huge amount of money. But I do have a concern about the revenue.
What is, what is, a couple hundred dollars? It's here and there, but I guess the point is, what is our goal here? If you're not gonna make revenue, we may be impacting the bottom line of businesses throughout the town, and we need to make sure we're understanding these things when we make decisions.
I think there were two, two actual purposes on it. One was, again, the promotion, the value, and the other was the fact that, you know, people come, where can I get this, and there's no place that has that. Yeah, so I think some of that was just going back to the food truck. You have facility need, and so it's badly worked, and saw, and people can't even say, where can I get some?
And also, in reality, you don't have any data to give anybody from RFPs. So maybe if we did this one year, and we could turn it over and do an RFP once you get that data. But, you know, we get forty-seven thousand people to visit just the beach and say, it's just a beach, and I understand business parks, I do. But if we even sold to one percent, well, that would reduce that when we sold out.
Well, that would be data we could provide in our RFP as well.
Yeah, but we don't have any real data to give anywhere.
Yeah, this is more, I don't wanna call it experiment, you can't go down a building, but...
Everything's been experimented, for the beach fees.
Everything the last three years has been experimented.
A calculated experiment.
No, it's only happened there.
I can speak with the numbers for the revenue extremely conservative. I'm always afraid to ask Joanne, she's telling me to conserve any numbers, but...
No, I'm not telling you that.
You, well, the revenue, yeah.
Eight thousand was the revenue, we sold everything. I don't see that happening between here and now, so I did a third based on the sales that they projected, the markup they had, a hundred percent.
If I'm just guessing, I would have gone with a right.
I know, I see. Okay, so, that's a good point.
And if it does, if it does happen, we go to the black and then make profit, and that's just...
But is that what we're about? We need to determine what we're about. The way I've kind of perceived this whole thing is that it's marketing, that's the point.
I mean, if it does, I still know the revenue stream, and I'll accept some of the other expenses that.
Right, well, the same thing with events, you don't, you don't make money, because some of it has to be done.
Yeah. It's come a year, it's been later, and I work to make things better, and we haven't made it.
We always do.
We all will. I mean, there's a lot of information here, we're gonna, I mean, if you look at the one printout of all the events, the breakdown, I think we're gonna have one question from the mayor.
Yeah, and I think that in going forward, now that we're set up, we can go ahead and do that, clock that one forward, so you actually have it, and I don't have to go back and recreate six months.
Those, those numbers from the events when it comes to labor, is that, is that calculated in Richard's number already, or is that in addition to?
It's actual, it's actual numbers on the timesheet.
Right.
Versus the budget.
Richard took that into consideration when he did his budget.
It's in another, it's in the email.
It's another spreadsheet.
It's the spreadsheet in your email.
But, but Richard took, now that we have the actual numbers, he took that into consideration when he presented his budget to you.
No, Richard didn't have that yet.
So that's in addition to.
No, he presented his budget as he normally does.
Right.
And we've talked about this for a few years, what's the job cost for some of these events? Because everything gets dumped down at the waterfront. So what we did was, we, or I did, we took and broke down the hours based on the timesheets, and we coded it to the events. Anybody on Beach Patrol, Welcome Center, that's on the first column. Farmers Market, that's what their hours are recorded on the timesheet for Farmers Market. We don't code Farmers Market, but we should be, and we will be. We'll see what that should have been.
You can just tell by the day and the hour, that you put in the category.
It's exactly what's on the timesheet, and it matches the payroll paid out for that period.
That is, that is the, that's the total of the people that worked that entire time, right? So for example, if there were five people working in the Farmers Market, there would probably be some numbers in there anyway, even though Farmers Market was not there, right? So you're gonna kind of put all five there, not just the additional.
What they break down on our timesheet for the day is, they might have did three hours Farmers Market, five hours Beach Patrol.
Oh, they actually worked that out.
They break it down on the timesheet.
Yeah, so I had to go back and recreate it, but now we have the codes to break it down in perils under our business.
So we could actually, in theory, reduce that from the budget that Richard looked forward, those additional hours for those things, because they're captured on the individual ones.
But you could, but you have to take into consideration all the revenue and all the expenses for those events that you can kind of get close to what you're looking at. And I provided that for you. But your hours are true. So you can kind of, you see how many hours it takes to do this. And there's other, one other thing, I think I wrote a note on that spreadsheet. There's like four different types of salaries for Beach Patrol, or wages, I'm sorry, hourly wages. So I averaged them, and it comes to eleven seventy-five as the average. So that's why I used.
It's a good breakdown, I'll agree. It's an eye-opener.
It is, and like, for Farmers Market, you don't, you'll never achieve that offset. But it's an economic tool, and some offset by taxes.
And that's part of the, part of Richard's law, uh, uh, law straight there is things like Farmers Market, because those numbers are still calculated in his payroll, even though they're dedicated to the Farmers Market. So I think we're gonna find, when you look at that spread, which you probably did, but it's, it's detail, it's good, it's good stuff.
So next time what you'll see is those two peckos, waterfront, Beach Patrol, and Welcome Center and Beach Patrol, but underneath there'd be subcategories for what they were actually coded.
And then there's, there's nothing we can do, we have to go back and reconfigure his question to make it up, because Farmers Market starts the first weekend in that.
Right.
The same thing with code enforcement, there's certain tools that you have to use, that you have to contribute money to, and the way I look at it, it's not so much tax dollars called, as it is gambling revenue. That's what I'm using for the events.
Your revenue source.
Yes, and the tax dollars, I kind of lead that to the basic structure of running and operating the town. But the other, those things can come and go, as you see fit, as counsel. And the eventual, never, you can never do it well with less staff. I, I don't believe that, because we've all worked it. We've even picked up trash behind the trash truck.
Yeah.
But you still need that event in order to bring people to town. So it's gonna be, it's gonna be interesting.
It's about the dollars.
Well, as you say, there's people walking the boardwalk, you know, we have a lot of people walking the boardwalk.
Total revenue lost there.
Yeah. But the impact of marketing, it comes back to other ways. And the trash, you know, if it's nice outside, there's a lot of trash.
Yeah, I was gonna say, whatever day it was a couple weeks ago, it was like seven, it was Saturday. Richard had somebody in the day do four trash trucks that day, in eight hours.
You'd be surprised.
And each trash truck takes about a half an hour, forty-five minutes, and were full, and every time they went up and down the boardwalk. And then of course, they were, they were looking.
But if, if this is something, that's a request, we'll see what we can do to see what that will look like, and then we'll go from there. That's all we can do.
And I'm gonna now actually swing by and meet with you, but on the bottom of the one breakout with the events, you have a total number, and then you have the events broken out. All right, so right here, these two numbers here.
This is Welcome Center.
You say total, what do you mean total?
This is Welcome Center Fringe, that's the first column in there. And then this is all the other events.
Right, so you add those two together, become the total salary.
With the hours, yes, with the hours that are put out, yeah.
Right, based on those hours, you add these two together, and then the Welcome Center and all these events, that's what the labor came to.
Which kind of costs.
Right, and then we compare that to what the budget is. All right, good. All right. Thank you. Good information. Paul won't be able to sleep for a month.
He's so excited.
Everyone's a big help. I'm impressed with Paul, Paul's up there now.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
About the rental licenses, and how they're structured? Because we have a lot of different categories around town. You have single-family houses, some are only one bedroom, most are two bedrooms, occasionally there's a three, well, there's three, occasionally a four. Then you have apartments, then you have rooms. How are these being licensed? Because the house I live in has two separate rental units in it. Does that add to us paying one license fee?
I don't know where you live, Merle, but if you...
Well, there are a lot of houses in town that have apartments in them. Are they licensed separately from the house?
Wait a minute, let me answer your question. Zoning for boarding houses, that's required under the zoning. To get an apartment, you have to apply for a permit through the town on the beach. And once you get your, make your apartment, or whatever it is, whatever you can do to make that apartment, then you get the rental license application, you apply, it goes out, and then code enforcement officer inspects it. When he inspects it, he determines if that's a viable rental. It's based on how many rental units you have. Yes, like, for example, there's two places, they pay, they're rentals, they pay two. If there are one homeowner lives in the house, but he rents an apartment for his house, he pays one for the apartment. Boarding house, that's, again, that's under zoning, we don't, I don't get into that part of rental license.
What about room members, because a lot of people around town that are renting rooms?
We're not aware of that, we do two things, rental licensing and vacation rentals for the hotel tax.
Well, how do you know, for example, where I live, that they're paying you property?
If you tell me your address. And when I look it up for you, I'll make sure that they're paying to trash,
I'm sure they'll appreciate this.
to water, and to rental license. So you, you can do that, give me a call. We got Randy who hunts the VRBOs on the block, so...
Well, I mean, there's some houses that are renting for three thousand dollars a month, and there's some that are renting for fifteen hundred.
Yeah, we can't control that.
Doesn't matter, it's like...
I would have a partner, and I'd pay over $1,000 a month.
Yeah, but that's.
Give me a call.
The town needs the fees.
It's not so much that, because you have some standards, standards, about standards, Meryl. Before, years ago, you weren't here then, standards weren't so high. But now they are, so now they're in town. Maybe those other two don't have standards, that's why you're gonna tell me you're not.
Are you closing this speed sign? I'm like that. Everybody said go. Are you closing on what?
No, I have one more question.
Oh, okay.
Are there any other questions?
Can we close the meeting?
The meeting is closed.